This special city council meeting workshop is called to order. Any public comments? Do we have anything over there? I didn't see anybody sign. Is it empty? Discussion regarding activities of the Logan County Economic Development Corporation. I believe Kay Wade is gonna...
Up here?
Yes, ma'am.
That's our special seat.
Oh, good. Special seat. Well, I want to hurry up a little because I know that that one is gonna start that...
Yeah.
It is gonna finish.
Who knows if they'll know by today?
I first of all would like to welcome the new city man, the new mayor, the new city manager, and the new members of the council. Jeff and Cheryl are new members, and thank you for making the commitment. I have a lot of respect for all of the people who serve on the city council because that's quite a commitment, and we appreciate you. I did want to talk to you about the Logan County Economic Development Council. It was formed in 1984, and if some of you will recall, that was when the furniture factory closed, and overnight, there were 400 jobs gone. Those were 400 jobs that were held by people not only from Guthrie but for the surrounding communities. And it was formed by a group of business leaders in the entire county. They knew that we needed to do something to get those basic industry jobs back. So their mission was always to promote and expand the broad-based economy of Logan County. And they set out to do that. You can credit them, this group of men, with the MidCo, what is now MidCo, Autoquid. They purchased land out on the northwest corner of Industrial and South Division, built buildings. That was for an industrial park. It's full now. It has been for a long, long time. So the EDC has always been focused on creating jobs and creating primary jobs. The board is still made up of business leaders from all over Logan County. They are focused on regional business growth, job creation, and households. The job creation then provides for new household creation, and the household creation is what actually retail looks at when they are looking at moving to any area. They no longer look at political boundaries. They look at regional markets, and we certainly are aware of that. As the primary jobs increase, so does the population, and so does the income. And so that's new disposable income that retail requires. So, you know, but you have to have those primary jobs. So the EDC's focus is still on primary jobs, and the reason that we think regionally is that Guthrie's population was 10,191. The county's population is 41,800 and something, and our market region actually is 66,000. In Guthrie, there are 4,300 homes or households, and in the county, there are 17,598. But in our market region, which is in a 30-mile radius of communities, it includes communities that have known durable goods retail, actually. So they, everybody in Logan County, if you need a new refrigerator, or household appliance, or furniture, or household accessories and all, that, you know, they're going somewhere. You know, every house has a refrigerator. So, you know, they're going somewhere to buy these big-ticket items that really help Guthrie's revenue. Guthrie is the county seat. It's very fortunate to have a good location on a very accessible I-35 and Highway 33, so it is a reasonable place for durable goods retail. And that's what we're going after at this time and will be until we can secure some. But it's those demographics that make a regional area attractive to durable goods retailers. One of the things that we have to offer is our revolving loan fund, and we secured that in 1995. It has been very, very successful. It was a USDA loan that we got. We do have to repay it, and we do that. Every year, we repay over $100,000 to the USDA every year. It's revolved four times since we've had it in the last 15 years. We have, we've handed out a page here. I just think it's important that we look at the basic industries. They're the people that create the primary jobs that are stable and typically will include health care and some kind of a retirement fund for their employees. They are the rock-solid base of a good economy. And these are companies, as you'll notice, that you... Mark, did you not get one?
I got one.
Okay. That, you know, are not on people's radar because as basic industries, they sell most of their products and services outside the county. But what that means is they bring the money back into the county. That's new money into the county. It's not just trading dollars, and that is to support families. So those primary jobs are very important. And it's an important tool when we work with... Am I out of time? I thought she had a horn that went off.
It is fixing to.
One example of a recent loan that we did last year that sort of is an example of the direct and indirect and induced impacts, these basic, is the impact of the revolving loan fund, is we loaned a young company over $200,000 to build a building for their business. And the owner of that told me very proudly the other day, "Every penny that we borrowed from you was spent in Logan County." The materials, the contractors, the electrician, the plumbers, the drywallers, the framers, every bit was spent in Logan County. So that is really good news. But that's what happens when companies borrow money, and they don't borrow money unless they need it. Currently, the revolving loan fund, we have 27 active loans in the loan fund, and they're all businesses. All of these that you see on here are businesses that we have worked with in some way or another, on some project, or with a loan, or the board has been involved with them, and we feel really good about all these businesses. We are, we also manage the city's revolving loan fund. We secured a $100,000 loan for them five years ago. They now have $50,000 back. At the end of the year, they have $60,000. And actually, I'm working right now on two small loans. That was designated to be used in the downtown retail historic district, and two businesses, one new one, and one who is wanting to refurbish their building. We're working on that. So we'll be bringing that to the city council soon. We work with Cody and Serena on both retail and industrial development. We're working with the Guthrie Public School System on a plan to upgrade the facilities, which they need. We have a good school system, but the facilities really need to be upgraded. And we're working with the city on a viable plan for the rodeo arena. So the new council may not be aware of that. A couple of years ago, we were able to secure a $250,000 loan for the city to be used for new sewer lines in the southeast quadrant of Guthrie. And we worked 10 years ago with the city to assist them to get the $1 million to bring the water and sewer in South Division and the pump station. And also, the grant to build a new terminal building. So, you know, we're proud of our organization. I'm doubly proud of our board, who is here this morning, I mean, this evening. And they are very helpful, and they believe in supporting business and industry and creating jobs. So that's what we're about.
Question, please.
Yes.
You brought it up about the rodeo grounds. What's your intention with the rodeo grounds? Do you have any... I mean, you said you're working on a plan. Do you have any intention?
We have invited a few members of the former Roundup Club to come and speak to our board, which they did last month. And they are trying to mobilize the Roundup Club again, where they really pay dues and they really pay for the electricity and maintain the grounds, like they do in other communities. And so that's what we're working on. It takes a lot of management, really. So somebody needs to do it. And I know from experience over the last year that I get a lot of calls about using the rodeo arena for various events. And it is, it's an asset for the city. Truly is. The arena itself is, we hold the mortgage on that, but we do not want to manage and maintain it. So we'd like for people that use it to use it and to manage the maintenance and the operations of it. And I think that's what we'd like. That'd be the ideal thing.
Thank you.
Are you a roper?
We're on TV here.
So are you?
No.
Very loved. Very loved. I love working for them.
Thank you.
So we threw it down?
Sure. Sure.
All right. Number three, discussion regarding the NLC Service Line Warranty Program. Now, the ones for the Economic Development Committee, if y'all don't want to hear this, y'all can leave if you want to.
It is riveting. It's riveting.
Sewer line warranties, right down your alleyway.
It's not riveting.
Let me know. I'll fix it. I'll invite Brian Davis to come up and sit in the hot seat, trapdoor chair, and kind of explain to us what this is. It is for a later agenda item for this evening for support, so we threw it on the workshop to educate y'all beforehand. So welcome.
Thank you. This program has been described a lot of ways, but never riveting, so I will...
Riveting.
Yes. Those riveting sewer lines.
We love sewer lines. Yes.
My name's Brian Davis, and I appreciate your time tonight. I had the privilege of working with Guthrie in the past. I was the director of the Oklahoma ICMA Alliance for Innovation, also known as Innovation Groups. And I have, in my professional career, I've been inside of over 1,500 city halls and I've been to 500 council meetings. And so, yes, I truly appreciate what you do, and I, as a citizen, it takes things for granted. I wake up every morning, and I turn on the sink, and water comes out, and I flush the toilet, and it works. I don't think about you guys unless, until it doesn't work, right? And so that's what our program is really all about, is to sort of take away a burden from city hall. And if you stop and think about it, a lot of homeowners really don't understand that they're responsible for those lateral water and sewer lines. They just, they're buried, they go unnoticed until something happens, and they back up or start leaking, and things get bad inside the house at that point. And then they call you and say, "I need help. How can you help me?" And unfortunately, you know, 99.9% of communities, the city has to come out and say, "We're sorry," and that's the best they can do. So with this program, it was designed, the company that I'm representing, we invented this product, which is a warranty, and it's not insurance, but it's a warranty for a water and sewer line on the residential side. And because it is tied and connected at the hip with the city, we have found that partnering with the city to educate and make homeowners aware is the best way to do this. And so we have been able to work with several communities already in Oklahoma, Lawton, Stillwater, Moore. And Lawton has been in the longest, and in two years, we have already spent right at $200,000 on their homeowners. That's $200,000 that their homeowners have not had to pay, that we've paid for them on their behalf to a city-based plumber. So in Lawton, had they not had our program, the homeowners would have been out of pocket probably more than $200,000. But let's just say it's $200,000. But now that money stays in the city of Lawton with local businesses, and we recruit our plumbers to be inside the city limits so that we wouldn't come in here and then use Oklahoma City plumbers. This program is also, it's different in a way that it's, the city is actually making the homeowner aware. And the way that we do this, it's, Phoenix, Arizona is in our program, they call it an awareness campaign, to provide optional access to an innovative solution and a trusted solution. So the National League of Cities just has a couple of partnerships where they partner with private companies, and so we're one of those. So we're the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. The U.S. Census came out just recently with a statistic that surprised me, and I almost don't believe it, but you know, U.S. Census, I guess I will. For only 18% of U.S. homes can afford a $4,000 surprise expense, which is about what it could be to replace a sewer line. And it could devastate a family's budget. So the way this program works is we craft a letter that the city reviews. So we respect the city process. We let the city approve any letter before we would ever send it out. It would go to every homeowner in Guthrie, so not renters, or not apartments, or multifamily type housing, but it has to be home with a dedicated water and sewer line. And if it's a home, if it's a rental home, we can send the letter there anyway. So we send this letter out, and it says, "First of all, the city of Guthrie would like to make you aware of your responsibilities for water and sewer lines, and we want to make you aware of an optional solution that can help you save money should these lines ever break or back up or leak." And then the homeowner has the option to say, "Okay, I'm interested. I'm gonna contact this company," or "No, I'm not." And they can either call us, they can email us, or they can fill out a little piece of paper at the bottom of the letter and enroll in our program. In Oklahoma, we're seeing about a 30% to 35% household enrollment take advantage of this program. If the city of Guthrie or any city is not enrolled in our program, and they call us, a homeowner says, "Hey, I want to buy your product," we literally cannot enroll them. We have to have a city, we have to have the city approve our process before we would ever send a letter to anybody. I also wanted to say that the cost of the program is $6 a month for water, give or take it. It varies region to region, but in Oklahoma, it's around $600, or $600, $6 a month for water line warranty and $8 a month for sewer line. We do not require the homeowner to sign any kind of contract. There's no long-term, one-year, two-year, three-year. It's a month-to-month deal. If they pay us, they're in, they get covered. If they want to pay a year forward, then they can do that, and we'll discount it. I see a red light. I'm so sorry.
I need your chair dropped. We'll tell you eventually.
We're at A-plus. She was smiling at me so sweetly that I looked and I see...
She's the sweetest timekeeper.
She loves her job.
We have an A-plus Better Business Bureau rating. We're accredited to the Better Business Bureau, and we survey every city once a year to say, "How are we doing with this partnership?" And 100% of those cities respond saying that they would recommend this program to another city. So I think that is really, that's probably, I should have said that and sat down. We cover all the way from the lateral service line, where the city stops responsibility until it daylights in the house. So that means through the slab up until you can touch the pipe. So, you know, a slab leak could be $1,800. If that happened, you're in our program, it would be zero out-of-pocket dollars. No service call charge, no deductible. We just have a plumber come out, and, yeah, I'm having to pay $60 tomorrow to have a home warranty company come out and replace a hot water faucet. I shouldn't have bought for $60, but there's no service call charge for at least. The soft cost to the savings to the city is that now, if we can get the average of 30% to 35% homes enrolled, that's 35% of your households that don't call you guys now and complain. They call us, we send a plumber to determine which side the leak is on, and if it's on the homeowner's side, they'll fix it. If it's on the city's side, they'll notify the city. 99.9% of our claims are zero out-of-pocket dollars, and we will not redline. We will not, there is another company out there that does not partner with cities. They focus on extremely elderly homeowners and very big homes, and send their letters to those, and they don't send their letters to the parts of town that really need the product. So we send to everybody. We do not discriminate, and if anyone wants to enroll, it's the same price for everybody in town.
That's good.
All right. Any questions? Someone wants to hear, you have any questions?
I will say on the staff side, just so that y'all know that we do support it, we did contact them. I knew about this program through International City Management Association and all the cities that show success. Wanda can tell you the amount of phone calls that we receive. "My sewer line's backed up. Why won't you get on our property and fix it?" And we can't. And so it's disheartening for us because we say, "Call a plumber. Well, how much is that gonna cost?" One of them recently, $5,000. And so, you know, we support this program because of our level of income within the community and that the city's not out of pocket. The program does provide, that he didn't mention, that if we wanted to do a royalty, I suggested to not, where the city would not revenue, that this, that money goes back into the program, decreases the cost for our homeowners, and the city is not taking on our revenue for a product or service that we're not actually providing. So we didn't put that on the agenda item, but just in case that comes up, the city could ask for a 50-cent royalty per customer, and we just didn't think it was enough. We'd rather give it to our people. And I'll be on the agenda this evening at 7:00.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. All right. If you want to start social media, then have him start.
We actually put it on a PC because we had some technical difficulties. So, yeah, we want to talk, or I want to talk.
Let the mic, we'll have it open up.
Number four, discussion regarding our social media policy.
There we go.
Now you got it.
We wanted to talk about our agenda item coming up, social media policy, and give you an opportunity to ask questions. First, we do have a little video that we'd like you to see that tends to open eyes up and maybe raise questions about social media, and it's pretty quick, and hopefully I can get that all quickly arranged here.
It does have music. If you feel the need to tap your toes. Tap your neighbor. You could. We do not have any rules against that. So you want to... We could. We could. It all goes to the city. Sure.
You need to sit down.
And there's variations of this video out there, and we try to pick the non-techno music and get something a little bit more calm. I know, but if you would like to stay late, I could show you that.
Yeah, okay. Well, that sounds good.
Here we go.
I showed that mostly to kind of explain to you, if y'all haven't been following what we do, we do monitor our Facebook. We have basically an unwritten policy of what we put on there. Our major goals are to support things that are happening in the city and support community events and even businesses in our community. We do occasionally get a response or comment that's relatively inappropriate, and if we find that it's very inappropriate, we have deleted one comment before if it's highly inappropriate because it's on our side. But we do respond to comments. If someone says, "Why don't you do da-da-da?" We do, we don't always do it publicly, but we do respond to that individual the best that we can. What we've seen from an HR standpoint, though, also is what are our employees saying on Facebook, and how do they represent the city in a beneficial manner to the community? And this came up, I know years ago, you started seeing lawsuits about, for example, a public safety individual in uniform putting something on their Facebook, and it has, you know, "City of da-da-da" on their badge and saying something inappropriate and actually affecting the sentencing of that criminal prosecution. And so a little bit about the HR, I'll let Jim do, but on our side, we are active out there. We do recognize that when we do a Facebook post, we go and look at how many individuals it reached, and some of the highest ones that we've seen reach are pretty amazing. For example, whenever we sent staff to Moore, Oklahoma, that got, that went viral, that we did that, and it was a very positive experience for the city. There was one with Damon highlighting his mustache, and for some reason, that went pretty...
It was actually on a cup.
I apologize. It was a cup mustache, and apparently, everybody loves Damon, and that went relatively...
Raymond.
Raymond. Everybody loves Damon and Raymond. Went relatively viral. So as we see the increase, and you know, I will, I've gotten a call from Chris Evans before about things posted about the city on a Facebook, and they'll call and ask, "Do you have a statement?" And it's something that we have to recognize that it's out there. And I had one boss once tell me, "Either you create your message, or someone else will." And that's kind of the idea with social media, because if we don't create it, someone else will make up what they believe Guthrie is. So we use it as a very positive PR opportunity, and with that comes sometimes some repercussions of being that open and public and transparent. So I'll have Jim kind of talk to us about the social media policy.
Thank you. Very good job. And we have, or Serena has designated people that can actually use that social media as in the city of Guthrie in terms of our, the city of Guthrie's Facebook, that type of thing. This policy does cover that, but it also covers, or the scope of it is, for the employees that are even on their own social media, Facebook, or even on somebody else's. And so the scope of this is pretty wide and pretty encompassing, and as employees, they have the ability to... they have the ability to positively promote or negatively promote and/or be disruptive in the workforce. And so, what we're trying to do is provide guidelines through this policy for the employees and for the employer, quite frankly. We've had, Serena and I have had situations already where we've said, "What do we do? We don't have a policy." Well, we don't. We have all kinds of policies, but we don't have a social media policy. So we put together this social media policy, and to be honest with you, we didn't create it on our own, we patterned it after another company, but, and had it reviewed, had it reviewed outside as well. But the thought process is it will not only be a guideline for the employees, but it'll also be a guideline for us as managers to manage and run the city. And it's a pretty straightforward policy, I think, you know, and just that, it provides guidelines. We expect employees to be respectful, to be honest, to be accurate, to identify themselves in terms of are they, you know, that they're not speaking on behalf of the city, if in fact they have something to say about something that's of interest or, you know, not interest to the city, that type of thing. Another interesting part of this policy is that, no different, I guess, than even our cellphone usage is, we're not barring employees from using social media, we're not barring them from even using it at work. No different than we don't bar employees from using their, you know, personal phones, if you will. Now, if we have a problem with them in terms of their productivity and issues like that, it will be addressed, but we don't bar it. And this social media policy is the same, it doesn't say that they can't do social media, and it gives some definitions. Basically, anything on the internet becomes or is almost social media nowadays. And we don't even know what's out there, you know, the next Facebook, the next LinkedIn, the next, you know, and so, and it's been a while since, you know, I've had companies, or, excuse me, municipalities call me and ask us about ours, you know, and, you know, we don't have one, but I can tell you that a lot of the, a lot of municipalities here in Oklahoma are now looking at it and putting something together, and again, under the auspices of having guidelines, not only for the management, but for the employees. So, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it for granted that you folks had an opportunity to read it, and if you have any questions or concerns about it, I'd be more than happy to.
I assume this will be a living, breathing, working document, that its changes need to be made, it can be quickly done and disseminated.
You bet, that's a good point. No different than our drug testing, or I should say, our alcohol and drug-free workplace policy. Yes, exactly.
All right.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Jim?
Sounds good.
Thanks, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Can we play that music? Before everyone's waiting?
No. No. Number five, discussion regarding agenda items. If you've had a chance to look at your other agenda items that are on there for the workshop, or Guthrie Public Works, and for the city council, any questions for any of those that you're concerned with? Anything you'd like the city manager to explain a little better before we?
On this Mumford, on this Mumford, do we talk about it here or down there?
Whichever you like.
Okay. I've got, I've just got some concerns on, on the $25,000 for that parking that the city paid.
Yes.
I feel like that, you know, we are getting tax revenues back, but, and it's minimal, I mean, it's, if your estimation is right, it's very minimal. I think that we should get more than that.
All we put in this document was tax from, from the event, not, this number does not include sales tax from the community.
Right.
So what we put in here was food and beverage just at the Cottonwood. And then, the other one is the 3% of parking sales and tax on the.
But that doesn't have to do, anything to do with J.
Yes, very.
Or with Jam, I mean.
Very little, we, this is a very, 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 very conservative number. This is just on what happens at the Cottonwood flats. So we're not counting.
And that's just, this is just what's going on with Jam.
Right, right.
Not with anything else. Right, I understand that.
Not the city, I mean, the community outside of the city.
Sure.
Very conservative. They do, they did not allow us to put in a contract, and I can tell you that they verbally agreed to a donation after the concert. It is typical that this series, this project donates a dollar amount to the city. They have told us they will give $25,000 in a check. And so, they would not put it in the contract, and we were hoping that they worked through their details to give us that. I couldn't put it in the contract. They typically, just like they did in, not Dixon.
So basically, the city's giving back the $25,000 that they're spending on that.
Right. And then this sales tax number, yes, doesn't take in any consideration of what we, what we anticipate.
But they're going to reap a lot.
Who? I'm sorry.
Jam.
I don't know what their numbers are, but I've been. We take in, now the parking, we negotiated because the parking lot is actually outside of the city limits, it's north of college. And so, I tried to get real creative, thinking maybe if you took the money on the south side of college, it wouldn't count, but the Oklahoma Tax Commission quickly told me that that's not true. And so, then we thought, well, maybe we have to annex the property, and so we actually went through conversations about doing that. And then finally, when I went to Jam and says, "We're losing 3% of that sales tax is not in the city limits," they said, "We'll just write you a check for 3%." And so, they're just doing a donation to the city. That's not a, that is not a true sales tax, that's a donation to the city. And then they're donating 1,500 armbands for downtown, and then we're hoping for the, that they true up on their $25,000 donation. So then you couple that on top of what the community will sales tax.
But the city's also spending a lot of man-hours in preparing for what's going on.
You're right.
There's going to be a lot of labor spent on.
We are billing them for quite a bit of that labor.
Oh, you are?
We are. And so, we send them a bill. For example, any work that we do for improving, we're putting gravel down for roads within Cottonwood, they pay us for that.
All right, I feel better already.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. We don't know that.
It's not in the contract, that was an agreement with the city and them, that if we, if Maxine was here, she could, but we, we're putting on, you know how the roads are in Cottonwood. So we're putting down gravel, so they're actually paying us to make improvements to our own roads.
Okay. Good, because we are, the city is spending a lot of time and a lot of money.
I didn't know that till the other day.
And a lot of, so we need to make sure that we get that.
We do believe that we'll break even financially, but I think more importantly, that we're bringing something that can sustain our businesses. I mean, we know that as a city, we were going to be out some upfront dollars when they told us they would pay us for some of those improvements, that was way better than us doing that. And whenever the other city told us that they gave a cash donation at the end of it, and the way they did it was $1 per ticket, which would equal for us $25,000, they said they intend to, but they couldn't commit that the lead band, Mumford Sons, would do that. So, because Jam Productions is the production company for the Gentlemen of the Road Tour, they couldn't commit that Mumford and Sons would do that in this contract. We're hoping for a later date to put that in writing.
Okay, so there's still ongoing negotiations with.
Yeah, I mean, we've asked for it, they've said yes, but we don't have it in the contract. I'd like it in writing.
Because Jam's just one production company, is J working under Jam and DCF as well?
DCF is a sub under Jam. Because they're local, they're Oklahoma City. More local than Chicago.
Okay.
But, and they should be here tonight.
Oh, is that right?
So if you want to ask any questions.
Okay. I think I'm good.
You're good? Feel better?
Little bit, yeah.
I think the city will, I do not believe the city will be out money for this event, as far as we look at it.
Well, they should be out for sure.
No, no.
But they should make money.
Yes. And I anticipate a pretty decent sales tax when we put it all together.
Any other questions on any of the agenda items or any discussion items for the city council? I adjourn this meeting.
No, did you say future items?
I'm sorry. Oh, request number six, request for future items.
Is anybody interested in recycling?
We're getting that conversation, and we've requested that Waste Connections come do a workshop, so.
They've done multiple ones, but I'd like to bring it back again.
Do you want, what we were doing with Waste Connections is doing a little bit of the homework, kind of learning why it wasn't successful last time, so we kind of have a, I'm learning a basic idea. I think we didn't do a good education, we didn't, I think there's a few things we can improve on. So we've asked Waste Connections over a month ago to come back and do a workshop, they said June, July-ish, so as soon as they can come.
We need to.
Do you want them to pitch the same program?
I like it. I think it's a great program, and it's $5 for everybody, it's a little over $5 for somebody to be in that program. And, you know, I had a few people call me, elderly people said, "I can't afford it." But we have to figure out a way that we can do it.
Aren't there some programs, Mary, where if you have a certain percent of your population, they lower, then do a percent back on your bill, which actually lowers it? Seems to me like Edmund did that when I lived there.
So recycling.
So our service provider will give us. Right. I mean, and maybe there's some new stuff out there now, but I, and I'm open to anything new. But I didn't have a problem with the old program either.
I'm like you. I think most because a lot of the elderly can't afford it, really can't.
We need to figure out how we can just tell them or.
Something to help them out or something.
Well, why about that donate a dollar? I mean, if people that can and would.
We need to look at it.
Can you give that old program for those that, is there one out there?
I prefer that she come in and.
We should tell this insurance deal here with the water thing, I mean, that would be great, if they could opt in and opt out. But I don't, they can't do that, I don't think.
And I know that only a couple of y'all hired me, but I will tell you, one of my previous jobs was, was three years as a recycling coordinator, so I'm pretty well versed on how recycling programs, I ran the City of Denton recycling program, a little bit different than here because we enhance the work, but I'm pretty versed on the public education side, that was my role, was to educate. I don't believe it's a knee-jerk, it's not something that you do quickly with your population, it's something that you educate and get input. So I'd be, I would be thrilled to talk to y'all about recycling.
I think when she introduced it the last time, the city of Mustang, I think, was just starting into the program, and so this is like a year or so later, so.
See, who would know how successful their program was to.
I thought it was a great program.
I think if we put it back on the map.
Right, and Fee Advisory Committee that y'all pointed brought that up for an agenda item for them, and so we had anticipated, their next meeting is looking at early, early August, first week of August, so we were going to have Waste Connections come back anyways in August. Would y'all like me to bring Waste Connections first to y'all, and then, I mean, how soon? What do you think? You want it soon? I think as soon as they can get something together.
It's just trash piling up everywhere.
Sure, sure.
I mean, second.
Exactly.
We're really here.
June 18. I'll definitely, we'll call. They might have been a little gunshot, just to let you know, when we did call them to bring it back, and so, but they'll be happy to come and talk about it. Yeah, that's it.
Wait a minute, no other future items?
Whatever you like.
That's it?
Whatever you like.
All right, number seven, we're adjourned.
There you go.